Let it live, sweet life, the United States of America. To the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in its soul, with every justice for all.
Here's the number, here, Vogel.
And Kevin did mention he'll be traveling, so he'll have to hear this. With that, we'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Do we have a motion? Motion by a member Vogel, we have a second. Second by a council member Crickwell, all in favor. Consent agenda, do we have any that's going to? I'm seeing none, and for those, we did do a last minute update, removed the MS four annual Republican input from item E down to new business, so we'll be ninety C now, just for people that have the old agenda. With that, we'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by a council member, I think, we have a second. Second by a council member Vogel, all in favor. Motion carries, meeting open to the public, and this is not a public hearing for the taxes and stuff, but if you want to step up and speak, step up, state your name, address the record, and address anything else you would like to do.
So this is, I want to talk about taxes?
No, this will be, that'll be shortly, that'll be next, pretty much.
You don't want to do anything now?
No. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to public hearing, twenty twenty five, proposed budget presentation. Typically, what we'll do is we'll get the presentation, and then we'll open up a public hearing, go in there.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents, and staff, tonight. Before you tonight, it's a two thousand forty five proposed tax levy, but after the presentation, the mayor will open up the meeting to allow for public input. After that segment is done, the council can then approve the final budget and tax levy for two thousand twenty five. Levying budgets must be approved by the end of this month. Per state regulations, after approval, the final levy will be certified to the county so that it can be placed on the tax rolls for two thousand. Each year, the budget goals for the city are maintain, are to maintain high quality and cost effective public services. Address priorities set by the city council, and maintain a strong fiscal position. The budget process starts in April by estimating salaries for current employees, in May, department heads work on requests for the new budget. In June, revenue estimates are made, debt service amounts are calculated, capital budgets are worked on, and the department requests are received back. During July and August, all the data is analyzed and determined the levy that is needed to support the city budgets. In September, the preliminary levy is set by council, and then in December, tonight, the final budget and levy are approved. The levy is then certified to the county and the state, and the final budget book will be completed sometime in February and put out on the city website. So, Minnesota, how are property taxes calculated? First, the city assessors determine the values of the home. If someone wanted to appeal that value, they would have to go to the county, because that's who takes care of those issues. Please note that the work done in two thousand twenty four affects the two thousand and twenty five spring notices that you get, that everybody gets, telling you this is your new value, that then goes towards their two thousand and twenty six assets. So it goes through many years there. Second, the levies are set by the government boards, the city council sets its preliminary levy in September. Input from the department's salary estimation, bond payments, capital improvements, estimated revenues are all analyzed to determine what levy is needed. Once the preliminary levy is set, the final levy cannot go up. Except for, say you sold a bond after the levy, all of a sudden, or there's some special circumstances, say you have all of a sudden a disaster, you can raise it for that. Third, then, is fiscal disparities is determined by Anoka County. The fiscal disparities is a program that shares the growth of commercial industrial properties in the metro communities. This takes any new commercial and industrial expansion since nineteen seventy one, as a supporting percent into this area wide fiscal disparities pool. The tax revenues from that pool are then divided up among the local governments in the center coming metro area. This means commercial and industrial property is taxed at two different rates, local and area wide. These amounts are then distributed back to the communities in the metro area based on population and market value of all the property in the community compared to the metro average. This means that part of our city taxes comes from outside of our city boundaries. You know, and moving to everybody else in there also. We do contribute to it, and we do receive from it, and we receive a lot more than we contribute. So the preliminary levies are set by the council. Fiscal disparities is subtracted from this amount to give us a spreadable levy. For two thousand twenty five, the preliminary levy over the city was six million one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Fiscal disparities was one million ninety-seven thousand and fifteen dollars. This leaves a spreadable levy of five million eighty-seven thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars, that's the first part. Then, you have to take your estimated market values. And those are used to determine the tax capacity for the city, so that is taken times percentage, but before you do that, you have to take off market value excluded. Fiscal dis, so the estimated market values are used to determine the tax capacity of the city. Fiscal disparities contribution from the city is subtracted in term, to determine the adjusted tax capacity value for the city. For two thousand forty five, the tax capacity value for the city was nine million eight hundred fifty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Less the four hundred eighteen thousand three hundred eighty-two for fiscal disparities contribution and other adjustments, leaving the city with an adjusted tax cap, capacity value of nine million four hundred sixty-seven thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars. The spreadable levy that we calculated above is then divided by this adjusted tax capacity value, giving us a tax rate of fifty-three point seven four three for two thousand and twenty-five. So, within the last couple weeks, everybody should have gotten their proposed tax notice from the Anoka County. The first thing I would say that you would look at is your value, it's up in the corner. This particular house, in two thousand twenty-four, the value was two hundred and fifty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. And in two thousand twenty-five, it did increase to two hundred seventy-three thousand nine hundred dollars. But if you look at the next line, that's at market value, or holds to exclusions, sorry. And that went up because in two thousand twenty-five, they changed, the state changed that calculation on. So it starts out as at a maximum of thirty-eight thousand dollars for homes valued under ninety-five thousand dollars. For any amount over ninety-five thousand dollars, you take that times ninety percent, and you remove it from the exclusion, so as your home goes up in value, you lose market value exclusion. A home valued at five hundred seventeen thousand two hundred dollars does not get any exclusion anymore. So that lowered, for some people, the hit, they know not as much of their home was taxed. So the next portion I would like to point out is just the line, the only line that we're talking about is the city of San Francisco. And we don't, the county is on there, the school district, and everything else. And so in two thousand twenty-four, this particular property paid one thousand two hundred fifty-two dollars and sixty-two cents. While in two thousand twenty-five, it's going to pay one thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. This is an increase for this particular house of a hundred, one hundred and one dollars and seventy-four cents. Now, some of that comes because their value went up, but your value probably never stays the same between year to year, but. There is a second page to the tax notice, it's just a supplemental budget page. It just shows all the different communities in Anoka County and what their two thousand four tax levy was, what the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four tax levy, and the two thousand twenty-five tax levy, and the percentage. It just gives you an idea of what the rest of the communities around are doing. This slide, so I put in there, that's the different market value or property values, and so you can see that if your home was valued at three hundred fifty thousand in both years, your taxes would have gone from one thousand seven twenty-three seventy to one thousand eight hundred forty-two in twenty-five, giving that an increase of seventy-six dollars and seventy-two cents. And I'd just like to point out, I do put on there the two eighty-four seven oh one, that's our median home value, that's the Anoka County stories. So delving into the levy, just to look at it closer, it was set at six billion one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, this was an increase of five hundred eighty-six thousand eight oh five, or ten point four eight over the two thousand forty-four levy. And the levy is broken down to general fund, operating is three point nine million, capital equipment, three hundred sixty thousand. Building is twenty-five thousand, street improvement, six hundred thousand, parks, two hundred thousand. And then we have the debt service levies of three hundred and ten for the two thousand seventeen bonds, which was the police public works building. And then the seven hundred ninety thousand for the two thousand twenty-three bonds, which is the city hall fires commission bonds. So, walking through, this just show, shows you those levies, and taking the fiscal disparities, getting down to the spreadable levy again, just showing how we get to that tax rate. Looking back at the history of the overall levy, this slide shows the tax levies approved from two thousand fifteen to two thousand and twenty-five. Over the past ten years, the levy has increased two million nine hundred forty thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars. Looking directly at the general fund, the revenues are budgeted at five million seven hundred fifty-one thousand dollars. This includes taxes, including recurrent until liquid amounts, licenses and permits, which includes building permits, fines and forfeits, which includes a pass through the state, intergovernmental, which includes LGA and wood saving. Charges for services, which include admin fees from other funds, and the fire services contract now with Bethel. And miscellaneous category, which includes interest and cable TV revenues. We also have a transfer from the liquor store of sixty-five thousand dollars, and fifteen of that is designated to the primary day fire force. Local government eight is our second largest revenue in the general fund after taxes, and you can see here the history from two thousand fifteen to two thousand and twenty-five. We did have before this several years that it was like nothing, they dropped us down, and so by now, since two thousand fifteen, it's been steadily increasing. And so we're back up to this, for two thousand twenty-five, six hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred dollars. But that was only an increase of four hundred and forty-three dollars. So, the expenditures are budgeted at five million seven hundred fifty-one thousand dollars also. And this includes general government, which includes council, administration, finance, legal, all of that. Public safety, which includes police and fire. Public works, which includes streets and recycling, culture and rep, which includes parks and family days. Community development, which includes planning and zoning and building inspections, and miscellaneous is for a lawsuit, isn't directly attributed to any of those other categories. Total increase in expenditure budget was three hundred ninety-six thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars for this year, or going into twenty-five. Of this amount, personnel costs for the general fund, including health and insurance benefits, is about two hundred sixty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. So the budget is balanced at five million seven hundred fifty-one thousand. So just going back into those categories, general government, and just list some of the things that they do. Includes all administration departments, along with legal, auditing, and assessing. You know, a ten million plus but dollar budget is accountable in there, or managed, and the city codes, elections, council, and boards, all fall into this category. Public safety is the police and fire response all in town. Streets and recycling includes street maintenance, snow removal, and recycling days. We have parks and trails providing for playgrounds, park maintenance, skating rinks to name a few. Community development handles all the building permits, rental license, vacant programs, and the work, any work on citizen concerns. And we have the debt service capital, and miscellaneous is out there, pretty self explanatory there, you know, we work really hard on the capital equipment plan every year in the summer. And so those numbers are then generated into this budget. We also have other funds, we have a special revenue fund, that's the police forfeiture money. The two debt service funds, as we talked about, on the levy, and then the capital, the capital equipment, buildings, streets, gambling, and park, is all, are all capital. And then, we have our enterprise funds, which are the water fund, wastewater fund, stormwater fund, and liquor fund, those do not see any tax levy, they are all supported by revenues that fund those. So, with that, that concludes my presentation. If council has any questions, we can answer them, or I would ask the mayor of the the public input.
I'm just curious, under the community development, so five hundred and two thousand eight hundred, I'm just curious what that breakdown looks like. What contributes the most, to the most of the five hundred and two thousand eight hundred in the community development column?
I would probably say the biggest portion there would be like salaries, because I don't, I don't know of any big other expense there. So it would be the salaries, there's four people budgeting that category.
All right, with that, we will open up the public hearing at six eighteen P M. If you'd like to speak, you can step up, state your name and address the record, please, and then the rest will be concerned.
Okay, my name is Julie Hyfert, two three nine four three Quicksilver Street in St. Francis. And I have just a few issues with these tab statements. For one, I wanted to address questions regarding both the county and the city, and your meetings are scheduled at the same time, so you can't be up both. Under statement, I have both the county meeting and this meeting scheduled for this time. So I can't address my issues with the county. But my tax, we have two parcels of land, one has thirteen acres in our house, and the other has about thirty-four acres in a whole building. And the taxes on the whole building one, we can up three hundred and eighty-nine percent. So together, both of my properties went up a combination of well, twenty-nine, over twenty-nine percent, over twenty-five hundred dollars. And the classification meant from rural to what is called non-homestead rural vacation. Do you know anything about that?
That is going to be the county, and that would have come out with your notice this spring, and so you would have had to take that up with the county. We don't, the city doesn't determine that. That's strictly on the county.
Was it too late for her to address the county?
They do this, and they, I mean, I don't remember getting anything before about this, so, I mean, if I did.
It comes out in the spring, I don't remember exactly when, but I know it's pretty early, because I think it's March that they have their, their their meetings where you can go and talk about your value. So just watch for those in March. At this point, I, I mean, I don't know if they would change anything, because.
I mean, isn't, aren't there, aren't there any rules about how much they can increase your property taxes? I mean, twenty-nine percent in a year, twenty-five hundred dollars?
I think that a lot of that is generated from the change.
And why would they do that?
Mayor Council, so that change would most likely be reflecting what your use is.
Been there for twenty-six years, year round.
Has the building been there for twenty-six years?
Yep, that was there before the house.
Okay. You, yeah, that is really a question to Anoka County or to the assessor.
Exactly, I don't know what county, do I need to go?
To assessor's office, I would say. And they might be able, I don't know, but they might be able to go back and, and fix it if there was a genuine mistake that she did change.
I hope it's the mistake and they can fix, because otherwise, I mean, they're going to wipe us out with that.
That wouldn't be our city assessor at all, right? That would be, or would that, would she contact them, or would she contact the county directly?
I think at this point, it would be the county.
Correct, because they, they said evaluate, if they give the opportunity for correction at that time. So being that this is post the evaluation step in the spring, it would be in the county.
I have, I have called them out of state before, though, and they did correct it. If it was indeed a mistake.
Why would they change the classification if nothing has changed?
I would start with the county assessor's office, I actually had a question about my taxes this year. Just to give you a name, I'm not a hundred percent sure it'll be the one, but the one who called me back was Eric Scholes.
Oh, that's, that's our city.
And that could call me back when I called the assessor's office. But you got to tell me that you ordered it to him, and then you correct it.
Okay.
Anybody else in the public hearing would like to step up? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at six twenty-three P M.
Mayor Council, there's a resolution in your package to certify the taxes payable for two thousand and twenty-five. If you want to move forward with that.
But is council concerned or moved forward? I'll just share my same concern that I shared all along, I don't, I don't, I don't see the city making some sacrifices, so. I, I, I respect what the staff have done, they've made a, that, that even levy, which is what their job is, but I think it's already out to direct sharing the sacrifice, so, I, I shared it before, so that's where I'm at.
That will entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-two, certify taxes payable in twenty twenty-five.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by a council member Crickwell, I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three to one. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three, adopting amendment for twenty twenty-five. Motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three. Motion by a council member, do we have a second? Second by a council member Crickwell, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Aye, motion carries three to one. All bills, and may ordinance amendment chapter two ninety-two dash nine dash one, pre-scheduled, second reading, ordinance three three seven, amending section two nine one of the city code, very good meeting.
Mayor Council, for today's, the second reading for the fee schedule. We had been asked to look at some other comparables. The sentence is easy, as I had hoped. I did find a few in our surrounding area, I was trying to stay within a circumference that made sense, if, because our residents do go to, you know, over, over lines to, to use space. So what I was able to find is there are several communities that have built a senior center and a community center. Fees are all over the board. We have one of the smallest maybe community center spaces outside of, like, just rooms that are available in a couple of the cities. Very, very typical for the cities to have a damage deposit, to have a key. So, we're not doing anything that is unique. But I did include those, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you would like changes in that fee schedule structure as it came to the community center, but that's the only piece that was, was really asked, we looked at in between, so that is in your package as well?
Appreciate the research on it, it was, have those, it wasn't, there's no good apples that apples, but I still, I still have lots of concerns with it. For the time being, for moving forward here, we really don't have what I call a community room or center, it's all up in the area, so what's going to happen anyway, I'm okay with just keeping it at that standard for now, but I, I do think we have to impress it next year, or whenever, so that's just my thoughts.
Yeah, thank you for that, right, okay, well, we'll look at it when we get into the, we get into the new building, and we have things figured out, and have a little more room for people to use, we'll have to address that, but for the time being, I think we just.
Have nothing further, with that, we'll entertain any motion. Ordinance two three seven, amendment six two nine one, the schedule, we're in a fee schedule. Motion by a council member Vogel, we have a second? Second by a council member, and ordinance, we will go.
Mayor, come on.
Aye.
Council member Crickwell, aye. That day, and Vogel?
Aye. Motion carries four zero. And with that, given as a second reading, we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-four, which is the publication. This is a public notice, have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash four. Motion by a council member Vogel, we have a second? Second by a council member Crickwell, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, LE, three nineteen, union labor agreement, police.
Honorable mayor members of the city council, before each night, is a collective bargaining agreement for three years with the control union. A pursuant to a closed meeting session on labor negotiations that we had with the council, city administrator, Dick Sunstrom and I did present the kind of final investment. Uh, it was accepted by the union. There's a number of just cosmetic and housekeeping, um, changes in there, but, um, with that, we would request approval of it, and I would stand for any questions that the council would have.
Don't have any questions over this time?
I have no question.
I kept it working.
Do we kind of hash this out? We talk during closed meeting itself. Um, I'll add a motion to accept the union labor agreement for the three nineteen, union labor.
I'll make that motion.
Or if I can, council member, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by council member, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both? Motion carries. Uh, we want item C, LE LS, local four one one, labor agreement, for these are
honorable mayor members of the council. This is a very similar type agreement. We tried to keep the terms as close together as possible, and I will note that when we did labor negotiations last time, it was for a three-year agreement, but it took us about nine months to get through all of this. So just because of the salary, uh, study that was conducted, this process was very condensed. Once that came out, it was very, very short to reach the agreement for what the recommendations of the salary study said. With that, I'd stand for any questions.
Questions, Mark?
No questions.
Uh, they were the last item pretty much, so we wanted a motion to accept the LE LS, local four one one labor. So, what's my council member Vogel, do we have a second? I will second. Um, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. New business, item A, highway forty-seven reconstruction, to be used as a credit.
Yes, Mayor Council, before each night is a proposed agreement with uh, Lockwood, Rindell and Rindards to work on highway forty-seven reconstruction. Um, this is, as we were talking earlier, similar to almost grant writing from a different perspective. We have used W S B for some of the grant writing on the highway. This is a more direct approach and has to do specifically with the water and sewer lines that we're going to be faced with under the highway. We had set aside two hundred thousand for the highway construction out of, um, general fund reserves, and that was in anticipation of that being the cost for the design and environmental. Um, how we've kind of had to backhoe with that is the design and environmental payment closer to five to six hundred thousand. So we reached an agreement with Inova County to split that in three ways. So with the savings of the funds, uh, and I've kind of outlined that, with the savings of the funds, that we don't need the full two hundred thousand now in that agreement with Inova County and Mindot, which I was hoping to have tonight, but Mindot is working on the J P A, so I'm hoping we have that soon. But that left us some room in here to use some of those funds to try to really recover some of the potential that we could get from the legislature under the, uh, law to get a break for our residents on the water. Um, if we're unable to, uh, find success in that, uh, funding, it is going to be a very hard impact on our residents financially with these water sewer rates. So with these funds, what they do is they would work with us for the full year. Um, they would work through this legislative session and ensure we are in a good spot, um, if we need to enter the second and third session. Want to get some help with these waters. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of how it ties in with the forty-seven and where the extra funds that can, can be used for this is with the reduced amount needed for the J P A, we have this buffer to use this to try to get some funds from the legislature. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
According to personal?
No, I don't have any questions on that. It, it's frustrating that we're not giving the instructions that would need and, and grants or funding and whatnots. We're definitely looking at, rather than that.
I've got to be, I've got to be, okay, actually, but just, well, I understand it correctly. Where are we at with the process? I mean, are we talking about bringing around on three years, three years, and there's no timeline at these level? What's the timeline?
We do, so, um, this the city is in the steps of going into the J P A for the design and environmental. Uh, from that, then the state, once we have those documents taken are completed, then the state will take over the full project, work towards final design and then, um, letting it out for bid. So we are looking at a construction schedule of two thousand and twenty-eight.
Sure, and then a couple, couple of questions on it, um, so I mean, I, this is just sort of the grant writer, is this considered lobbyist? What, what, what are we talking, proposing hiring here?
Mayor Council, so this is a lobbyist?
And then my other question is, I, I recognize that this firm is not going to be able to give us any guarantee, but what's their track record? I can actually, a well-known. We have, we have evidence of past work that they've done and.
We have, so Mayor Council, there's, there's a, there's a couple firms out there that do this type of work. Um, their history in many of these is they are themselves either past legislative or highly involved in the work of the county capital. Um, so they, they know the routes, they know the, the doors that open and close. Um, there are cities that have been very successful getting funds for projects that maybe weren't I don't want to misspeak, but for things that maybe were more of a desire or a want than a need, such as an infrastructure project that had the lines. So they have been very successful with everything from parks to community centers to, yeah, water sewers. That would be very good.
And we've got a new lawyer, so before I take it.
Correct.
Okay. And I'm just looking at, I mean, I think it's sad, but I don't think it's.
I'm with you.
I think it's something we might have to hold me up and pay, you know, I'm not excited at all, so.
Yeah, okay, but I think that, I don't know. We've been working on this a very long time. Um, COVID kind of slowed things down for us, but, um, we're, we're working by to get this for your experiment, so please be patient with us. That's not our problem.
Yeah, I, uh, I am in part, that's one of the parts of the need unfortunately to do, um, don't like the process, put it in the process, I'll leave it at that. Uh, so with that, we're going to entertain a motion to approve legislative service agreement, if law operator Rindell. Looked at that part. Now, I, all right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion to the mayor.
Motion by council member, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by council member, on the paper?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item B, ordinance, uh, city of St. Francis, regulating cannabis business registration, uh, first reading, ordinance three A, amending chapter six, section thirteen of the St. Francis code, be regulating cannabis businesses.
Mayor Council, so before tonight is the business registration process. The zoning and the planning portions will come after it goes through the planning commission. Um, so tonight, this is just the steps that they would be required to do to register, uh, after working with the state, after getting through planning and zoning. Then they would go through the business registration. It is not a license. We do not have the approval to override the state. If they say that the business can be here and it fits in our zoning, we give them our registration, so this is not a yes or a no. There are major delays in this process, and there's a lawsuit that was just dropped on the state, so we anticipate what they were already pushing to in April, July. Could now be much later into next year. Um, but the cities are still bound by having our ordinances in place in January because that was actually written and statute, so. We, um.
Job security.
Yes, we have, um, presented to you through the steps that we talked through at the work session with the state requirements along with the areas. One of the changes that we had talked about with the business hours, we did have to update as they are longer business hours than our current bottle shop is allowed per state statute. So they will actually have greater hours on Sunday than we are able to with our municipal store. Uh, but otherwise, the Monday through Friday, we follow the, the liquor store. Um, we set the distances as appropriate from the work session. And a lot of the other stuff is really set by, uh, the state as far as what we can and cannot do. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. This is the first reading. I don't anticipate that the state will have anything changed before our second reading, and that's only in two weeks. However, through the next legislative session and the current lawsuit that has been filed, um, I can see where we may be in that even in the next spring, so. This is step one.
Fair.
I have any questions or?
One question I've had was, I know we talked about, I was in, five hundred daycare, it was mentioned under the temporary portion in here for a temporary license, but I might correct that, like six thirteen seven, it says zoning compliance. Is it under zoning, the new guidelines under zoning?
Yes, Mayor Council, so a lot of those discretionary cases that council had actually are, are part of the zoning ordinance. So you will see those when that section comes to you again. Like, yeah, like the hours of operation, some of the, um, business requirements and then the distance requirements will also be used.
Good. Well, yeah, appreciated staff's work and, um, we will continue that work. I'm sure we'll probably be event again, but, uh, it will bound my statute passes, I guess, whether first, uh, do we have a motion uh, to approve ordinance three A, amending chapter six, section thirteen, that says, St. Francis city code to regulate cannabis businesses? What should we approve? Do we have a motion?
Let's have a motion, yeah.
What if my council member, I will second. Um, with that, we'll do a roll call.
Mayor, council members, aye, Vogel?
Aye.
Crackle? Aye.
Motion carries four zero. That is the first reading. We'll move on to item C, MS four, annual law company for public input.
Mr. Mayor, member of this council, this item is in regards to the city's stormwater pollution prevention program. This program aligns the requirements for the city's MS four permit. Uh, this permit, which is regulated by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, authorizes the city to discharge stormwater into the public water system. One requirement of the stormwater pollution prevention plan is to allow the opportunities for the public to comment on the adequacy of the plan. It is also recommended that the meeting, it is now recommended that the meeting be open to the public to accept any comments. If no public comments are received, this agenda can be closed.
All right, ready to hammer it? Do I?
Mayor, it's not an official public hearing.
It does not have to be a public hearing.
So.
Well, same to people in the audience, would any of you like to step up and comment on the MS four?
Well.
Feel free, step up, take your advantage to the record, leave.
Yes, I think so. Um, but first of all, I'm a barber, I'm a nineteen old, three two twenty-nine, St. Francis. Um, one thing, thank you for all your work on all this. It's a lot and, uh, so thank you all for all that you do all the time. The stormwater things, I think it's a, this, there's a section of this that hopefully in the future can maybe be taken care of or looked at. Where I live, with quite a bit of land where we're helping prevent so much pollution going into the city water system, yet we have to pay. We're, we don't have city sewer line fire, but we have to pay cash for this instead of these prevention, pollution prevention plans, we're actually helping. So I think in the future, as we look at these, and I'd look after look at this one closer that you're talking about. But that we look at more the land use and what's being used instead of just blanketing everybody with the same fee. Because the lands are different. So when, they know now from research that when you have land that's set aside, like ours is in a land trust, it can't be developed. Okay, it's there for the sake of groundwater cleaning and pollution prevention. A little odd that we have to pay for what we're doing for the community, so, you know, there's a little misfit there. But I think with new data and technology, we can quantify some of these things in the future. But this stormwater plan, please consider, don't just lump everybody in the same thing, because it's not the same. Ours is there just for pollution prevention and conservation.
Thank you. See nobody else? We have a motion to approve that.
You don't need to.
Say that, I'm afraid anyway, at six forty-four, we'll close, item C, uh, the, to the public input on the MS four permit. And we have a meeting open in the public again, if anybody would like to step up to speak, uh, about anything? Questions, cons, concerns, most importantly, compliments? Great. We're just. We'll move on to, we don't have any, uh, staff reports, so we'll move on to council member reports.
Nothing's gone somewhere there.
I didn't do anything, but we do have a couple events coming with, um, on Wednesday, December fourth at six P M. Um, at Woodbury Park across from Typer Store, we'll be doing community tree lighting. And then on Saturday, December fourteenth at six P M, um, at Captain's is the Lions does their gathering.
Thank you. All I have is I spoke with a few staff members. I did not get the fifty percent off.
There's no part.
Is there?
Yes, it's supposed to be December.
But all month?
All month. They have a lot of stuff to move by.
Well, my aunt is a huge fan of that store.
They did mention that.
Well, I saw it on Facebook, it said today and then.
That was for a small business side, but they did post later that gets throughout the month. The only caveat is due to staff insurance, you may want to call to make sure that they will be open before you stop it. So.
All right.
Yeah.
Um, and city optical will be closed, uh, tomorrow and Wednesday, we're moving. And we'll be back over on the. Okay. Um, with that, we'll entertain a motion to. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Crackle, second by Vogel, uh, will, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, motion carries, continue at six forty-six P M.